I'm gonna call the Planning Commission to order at seven oh two. All those that are able to please rise to say the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so we have right now two members missing, um, regular members. So we will see Marcus and Nick tonight as regular members. Alright. Minutes.
So I have put the minutes out in front of you. I, uh, Bill had alerted me the fact that I had not sent it, cause we didn't send a packet out this week except for the agenda. So do you, I did send them this afternoon and you do have minutes in front of you.
Yeah, they were sent this morning.
We'll go through the minutes.
Sure.
Okay, uh, referring to the, uh, minutes of the Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Uh, are there any comments on page one, including lines one through forty six? Page two, lines forty seven through ninety two. Page three, lines ninety three through one twenty four. Yeah, okay, hearing no comments to the, uh, submitted minutes, I make a motion to, uh, accept them as, uh, submitted.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Alright.
Who, who's, who, is that gonna happen? Julia, that's my, thank you.
Julia, good. Alright, so we have the.
Yes, so Mark Aragoni is with us tonight from SLR. We have, um, a couple of things to present to you. We have, um, well, we, well, I don't know what he's gonna present, but we do have, uh, survey results and study area profile.
We've had a change of, uh, very.
Don't worry about it, he's gonna go. It is available. Um, and, uh, I also have, um, you know, he also probably can, can, he and I can both kind of review what the plan is for Thursday
Yeah.
as well. Um, after the meeting tonight, uh, I, I will, I, 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 I forget, did I put these in your Dropbox as well? We did, okay.
Yep.
There's a lot going on today. Um, so those are in your drop, Dropbox. Um, and we also, um, we, we do also have the, the raw data with kind of all of the open ended questions. I did not put that in your, in your Dropbox yet. Um, we can make that available to you, but those are interesting to read through. Yeah. And I, if it's okay, just.
You're doing a really good job, you wanna just keep it?
Yeah.
Maybe it's hard. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mark Aragoni, I think I've met most of you before, uh, principal with SLR. I originally, um, Robert had asked me to sit in for this meeting, we didn't wanna reschedule it. He knew he couldn't attend, I said, I'd be happy to come up as long as Taylor Daigle comes and does the presentation. Taylor called me about a half an hour ago and shoot, her car was broke down on the side of the road. So, um, I'm going to walk you through a summary of all the information that you had. I think George just said in two documents are the main ones. Um, you have the whole survey revol- uh, result package, lot of detail, all the questions, all the answers. I'm gonna sort of roll through it, just very summary, um, oriented. You can go through and look at all the details of it. The second one is the study area profile, which Taylor was all excited to walk through. Again, lot of information, you have it in your package. We're just gonna roll through a few slides, summarize five, five topics, I think there's thirty slides. We're gonna roll through them, you have all the information, but we felt that was a good idea, just sort of summarize it. Um, and then the last thing is, we'll give you a little preview of what we're gonna do for the open house, um, on Thursday from four to seven, um, which I will be here along with three or four of my colleagues. So we're gonna have a, a good presence here. Um, if I forget to say it, it's an open house. So if you can get there at four oh five, great. If you can tell somebody that they can't make it till six thirty, come at six thirty. We're gonna have stations set up, um, to just walk through, ask questions, um, right through four to seven, there's no set agenda. There won't be a presentation or anything like that.
Okay. But we will just, 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 we'll, we'll hamon egg this. We will post the information that we gave you guys today, these reports. We'll make those available on our storyboard and the town site after the, after the community workshop.
Okay.
Yep.
What's the expectation for the committee members from four to seven minutes?
You have no formal expectation. You're in, you, you think of it as, you're invited as a, as a citizen and a planning commission member. You may participate in the, um, you know, in the, in, in the sessions or in the, um, what do we call them?
Stations.
Stations.
Stations, yeah.
In, in the stations, um, you can be there, you can be there with smiles on, yeah. There's no, you don't have any formal role, just kind of, you can meet and greet if you wanted to, um, talk to folks, kind of, um, kind of on your own if you wanted to as well. But, but yeah, just, you know, kind of as a regular citizen really. And just so you can kind of observe and see what we were doing and see what the stations are like and kind of overhear what people might be saying. That's, that kind of, you know, fly on the wall stuff is important too.
Yeah.
We'll go over the topics at the very end, the last couple of slides. And it's, it's probably better suited for, if you have an interest in one of the topics, sort of hang out around that booth, add to the conversation or just mingle, like George said. Jump in a topic conversation, jump to the other one, um, that's a good way to look at it. Okay, community survey results, we kept it open for four weeks. Um, the total number was three hundred and seventy one respondents. So you can look at that one of two ways. You can say, we only got three hundred and seventy one respondents, but I can tell you, we did a park and rec study, um, for the town of Agawam, similar size, twenty to twenty four thousand people. Um, we got two hundred and fifty. Then we decided to put the, um, survey notice, uh, QR code in the water bill when it went out, we kept it open. So everybody who paid a water bill got the QR, we bumped it up to about three hundred, right over three hundred. And they were thrilled to get three hundred. So, don't be fooled by the responses, and I know Simsberry has done ones before.
The town planner and planning director is thrilled with the response rate.
Yeah.
Uh, and particularly because of what you're gonna say next.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, two hundred and sixty one of those responses came from Terriffill, um, which is really good. It's really good, it's a really good, um.
Responses from twen- you know, virtually twenty percent of the population.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That is really good.
I thought it was also very interesting that if you mix up the numbers, it's one, two, three, four of the population.
I guess it is.
Yeah, it's very interesting. Uh, and then just some, some overviews, uh, you know, seventy percent live in Terriffill. Um, interesting number, ten point five percent of the respondents were from outside of Simsberry proper. So, um, you could look at that in a bunch of different ways, business owners, um, members of, you have Farmington River watershed, who's very aware of the project. You have some other, um, not for profits and businesses that made up.
We sent, we sent it to Main Street, we sent it to the Chamber of Commerce, we sent it to the town employees, so, and that, that's probably a little bit of that.
Yeah. Uh, forty percent of the people took the survey have lived over twenty years. Um, that's, that's good. Um, top three reasons, location, the housing, and the schools. Um, majority age, thirty five to sixty four, it was a good spread, um, with your highest percentage from fifty five to sixty four, sixty five years old. Um, twenty percent of the people who responded, their children are away from home. I always like to pay attention to that one, cause you hear the empty nesters and my kids wanna come back to town, but they don't have anywhere to live. And those are just some things to keep, keep an eye on when you start seeing percentages like that. Not, not atypical at all. So, each of the topics, I think there's three or four slides. Um, the survey was set up where there was one to five or one to six questions for each of these topics. Um, we just took a, a quick synopsis and takeaway. So, first area, um, or topic was sense of place and what's special. Um, and these are percentage, forty two percent of the respondents, community was, was a special, was special part of the, of the area. Twenty six percent, small town feel, about fourteen percent, Farmington River and the gorge. And then some others were, that were noted, but a, a lower percentage, community events, community spaces and historic character. Um, then we always take a shot and just say, okay, a lot of people have ideas of what they wanna fix and where some of the problem areas are. So we go ahead and we ask a couple of questions, about fifty percent want more local business. Um, about fifty percent, more community spaces or improvements to those community spaces. Forty three and a half percent sidewalk, crosswalk, safe, um, safe connections. Uh, forty two percent historic preservations, and then just some other, others, um, that were more than one respondent. Um, connections and access to the natural areas. So, um, I think you could probably sit there and say, okay, it's starting to make a little bit of sense. Village and character, we always ask for some, what do you like? Can you give some representative examples? And the idea is not to say, oh, I want it to be exactly like that, but chances are that some of the, some of the places that people list have some things that might fit, um, and there are some similarities. So Collinsville, Unionville, Old Weathersfield, um, were listed. What sort of makes that village character? The local business, the river culture and the historic charm. Now those were specific, um, to those areas. Detractors, traffic patterns and speeding. Um, Blight was an interesting one, twelve percent, that's a pretty high number. Um, but we are starting to see more of those in village areas where it's hard to keep the businesses there. Okay, parks, trails and natural environment. Uh, most frequently used, um, parks and trails, Farmington River, um, the Metacoma and the Village Greens scored pretty high um, in Terriffill at almost twenty percent. That small little green that sits right in the heart, um, of the village. Top three park improvements, um, recreational updates, um, just general cleanliness and maintenance and town community commitment, um, all scored pretty high in the percentage wise. Um, Farmington River, sixty, about sixty percent of the people who responded actually engaged with the river activities. Top two activities, bird watching and kayaking, interesting, bird watching has been scoring high on a lot of projects. It seems like it's making a comeback, um, but it's something I would say probably five, ten years ago, probably wouldn't have seen, um, some of those, but it's making a, a big comeback. It's probably related to COVID.
Cause I, I just saw something about that the other day, that during COVID, they're like, ah, we went outside and, you know, and then it became kind of.
You don't even have to get out, out of your car.
Right.
So, any abilities, you, you're able to partake in it, so, it's interesting that we, we saw that one. Um, and then others, still pretty high, swimming, fishing, tubing, canoeing. The swimming part was interesting, we had a conversation in the office about swimming and I said, I swam in Farmington River. When I was, I grew up in, uh, Harlinton, Burlington and then Avon, I swam in the river. They said, you swam? I said, well, we waded in the river. So, um.
I see people in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How about the secondary people do?
Uh, another topic was local businesses. Um, frequency of visits to the local businesses. So forty five percent were monthly, uh, thirty three percent weekly. I tried to do a little bit of math on this yesterday to try and see how you could equate that to a dollar value. You know, if you have somebody, um, that's visiting Terriffill, thirty, thirty three percent of those people who responded, which we can target that number, three sixty one, take a third of it, um, seven days in a week, how much is that as indisposable income? I did the math, I think it was somewhere's around fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars. But it's interesting that you can actually start to drill into some of those numbers. Um, again, small percentage, cause you're only getting the people who responded it, responded to it. But if you put a multiplier on it, you can start to see that the people who responded and said, we need some more businesses. You could think that it might be a little bit of, well, if you build it, they will come, but you have to have the foresight like you're doing now to do the survey, do the plan and start to find these areas that may be better suited to have some businesses, um, come back in. Um, let's see, what was desired on the local business front, restaurants, retail stores, recreational facilities. Um, we could assume that if you tie that into the business side of the recreational facility, it's more of a tube or kayak rental. I think that ties back into Collinsville canoe and kayak and things of that nature, maybe even Satan's Kingdom, um, the tubing and things like that um, over on Farmington and New Hartford. Convenience store, coffee shop, um, transportation, um, traffic conditions, we knew that traffic speed and congestion was probably gonna score pretty high and it did. Um, however, kudos to DPW, um, and street maintenance, cause the road conditions, um, that's a pretty, that's a pretty high score and an easy one to give a negative to. Desire more, more shared trails, sidewalks and bike lanes. Um, about half the people felt safe walking, um, but definitely not biking. Um, and then some traffic calming ideas were mentioned. And again, all the detailed responses are, are in the package. Housing was a topic. Um, the right amount for small and large single family homes. Um, sixty two percent of the respondents felt that the housing in the village is accessible and affordable. Um, there was a, definitely a mixed feeling on new housing. Um, we'll call that about half of the respondents, a little less than half of the respondents. Little less than thirty percent favored more of a mixed use. Um, and then that, another third said, no, we don't want any new housing, probably related to, there's a general feeling that there's a good mix um, within the village itself. Okay, the study area profile is the separate package, um, that you got. Again, a lot of information in there. I'm going to drop this one. Okay. So again, ton of information in there. Some of this information, to put it in layman's terms, is taken from databases, um, whether they're GIS based, um, whether they're census designated place based. So, we're able to harvest all that data based upon, um, demographic data, size, location, region. Pull that all in and balance it off of exactly what is going on in Terriffill. So a lot of this is existing conditions, um, that we need to use, cause we're kind of setting a baseline for all this stuff. Um, so, lot of information, and I'm just gonna roll through it. Again, we broke it into, I think, five sort of study, five distinct topics. So Terriffill Village, um, the study area, not rocket science. Um, but sometimes it's nice to see exactly, alright, what are we talking about? Is it in the middle of Simsberry, is it on the edge of Simsberry? A lot of people won't know that. Um, and a lot of people new to town or trying to understand this study when it's completed. This is some good background information. So four nationally recognized areas within this small, um, village is pretty impressive. Very significant, um, history and documented history within the village, like we see in a lot of New England village, but they're New England villages, but it's very unique. Um, so, this part of the report really dives deep into the history. Zoning, um, is simply taking a look at exactly what the existing zoning is, um, and it's parcel based. So, listing of your residential districts within the village, the business districts within the village and then the, the section of the industrial piece, um, of the village. Do you wanna add anything to that?
It's pretty much. No, I mean, again, we're just trying to, we're trying to understand what the baseline zoning is.
Yeah.
Um, you know, what the land uses are associated under those. And then, you know, as we, as we begin to, to, you know, to, to review the survey and, and, and talk to the, um, and talk to the citizens about, you know, problems or barriers or those kinds of things with, with new business, you know, um, are, are there ways to, to restructure some of those zoning categories, maybe to attract the kinds of things the community wants?
And again, for a small land area, there's quite a few different zones that exist out here, no doubt about it. When you look at four different residential zones, um, within the area.
Yeah, we, so we, an interesting, interesting issue came up th- th- this week that almost relates directly to this. So, so most of, um, you know, there's a stretch where all the, all the businesses are, the, um, Crate and Barrel, those kinds of things. Those, that's all mostly zone B one. And a lot of that is all built as, um, not, not Crate and Barrel necessarily, but, um, you know, there's, there are Victorian houses that have, have a business, have a restaurant in them, but the B one doesn't allow any sharing of residential with. So we don't, we don't even have a good way that you can live above and have a shop in, in those zoning districts. So, that could be something to, uh, there's a convoluted section of the B one that talks about forty percent and it's got, it, it, it doesn't work. It doesn't just allow a mix of the uses in a, in a, in a single, what was formerly a single family house at some, you know, at one point that now has, 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 you know, has been renovated and there are some businesses in those. And so, that's one of those things that, that perhaps is part of the zoning analysis we could try to fix.
Correct. So for zoning analysis, it goes to actual land use. Um, and again, we have eight different land uses from commercial, community, mixed use, open space, residential, right away, which is, are the streets, um, vacant land and then open water. Um, so those are the, those are the, uh, different land uses within the village and then broken up by perspect- uh, percentage.
It just shows how, how big a footprint the park has.
Yeah.
You know, and, 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 you know, its neighborhoods and the park.
Yeah.
Uh, points of interest, um, two major transportation routes, so we know we have one eighty nine and three fifteen. Um, one eight, one eighty nine is classified as a minor arterial road. Route three fifteen or Elm Street is, uh, classified as a major collector road. Um, both, both have Connecticut DOT, um, oversight. And three fifteen really traveling right through the middle, up there, so. Which I think directly led to some of the comments in the, um, survey. Um, community field, uh, facilities, have the elementary school, fire station, um, and Terriffill Park. I don't think we missed any. Used to be a post office, but we, we also had a discussion about the post office. Everybody knows what the post office was? I learned that, I knew, I didn't know that, but I did learn that. Demographics. Okay, population, race and ethnicity. Population thirteen hundred and twenty four. Um, let's jump down into, the village population has remained stable since two thousand and ten. It has continued to diversify from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, the share of this population, the share of the population that is, um, let's see, white declined about ten percent. Hispanic and La- Latino increased three percent, Asian increased two percent, and African American increased one percent. So although the number didn't increase, the change in demographics and ethnicity definitely did change. So it's changing, it's definitely not stagnant, um, like some New England towns are. They, you can't say that the village is stagnant, cause there's definitely change that's happening. Age profile, um, this was a little bit came out of the survey, um, as far as. Yeah, yeah. Terriffill and Simsberry, um, median age forty one point three to forty three point seven. When you compare the town and the village as a whole, isn't a very big, um, change. So therefore you could look at it and say, okay, there are some similarities, um, but that's where, that's really where it changed. That's one of the last similarities, it really starts to change when you look at Simsberry and then you compare it, um, to Terriffill. The numbers do change. Although when you look at it in Hartford County as a whole, it's pretty similar to, it's more similar to Terriffill than it is to Simsberry, when you look at those percentages.
Yeah, and I think those are kind of things that we know, right? I mean, we, we assumed, you know, that Terriffill is a little bit younger and is a little bit more diverse than the rest of, the rest of, the rest, rest of Simsberry as a whole.
Yeah, and looking at that, that Gantt chart from left to right, the darker purple is youth, zero to nineteen. The second, um, darker blue is young adults, twenty to thirty four. The light blue is adults, thirty five to fifty four. The orange is older adults, fifty five to seventy four. And then the, all the way to the right, the rose color is senior seventy five plus.
That's, that's interesting, it's both younger and older.
Yeah.
Interesting. Yeah, that's interesting data.
Um, education and household income, um, the Gantt chart at the bottom really focuses on education attainment. Um, so if you look at Terriffill and you look at that first column, which is high school, education or less, thirty, well, thirty three percent, um, of the population falls within that. Whereas if you compare it to the town as a whole, um, the high school education is down at thirteen percent. But if you look at the middle column or sort of the jade green or mint green, Simsberry being on the bottom, Simsberry town as a whole is up close to forty percent with a bachelor's degree or higher education. Whereas in Terriffill, um, the village, it, it drops down to about twenty three percent. But, it's very, it's more diverse and evenly spread when you consider some college, associate's degree, two year, bachelor's degree or graduate degree. It's much more diverse in the village than it is in the town of Simsberry, which I think goes right back to that previous slide, um, and relates well to that. Housing. So this is really trying to narrow in on the housing type, again, looking at the survey results, they do try and, they, they balance um, with what we heard in the, in the survey. So six hundred and eighty eight, um, housing units in Terriffill, which is about seven and a half percent of all the units in Simsberry, um, I'm sorry, yeah, sorry. Seven point three percents of, seven point three percent of all the housing in Simsberry is located in Terriffill. It's a pretty small percentage. Um, Terriffill, fifty seven percent single family. And forty three percent of the units in Terriffill are structures with two or more units or more than one family units, as compared to twenty three percent in the town as a whole. Fifty eight percent are owner occupied, thirty five percent are renter occupied units in Terriffill. And that's compared to seventy four percent ownership in the town of Simsberry versus twenty three percent renter, renter occupied. So, the puzzle starts to go together when you start to look at all these different pieces. And one of the interesting and I think opportunistic points is, it all goes to the diversity of education, age, ethnicity, everything that's an opportunity for the village, cause you already have it there. So there's diversity in thought that's already there. It's not like you have to bring, um, different diverse thought, age, all that, you, you have it already and we're starting to understand that. Um, this is just strictly looking at the age of the housing, um, you start to look at historical areas. Um, it really starts to make sense that you don't have any.
It's an old house.
You, you don't have any newer subdivisions. In the top, you know, the top third of this chart is from nineteen ninety or higher. Um, Terriffill is the darker blue. And that, the bottom of the graph, the last column is nineteen thirty nine or older. So you can see that, if you wanna find out besides Main Street in, uh, Simsberry where the old houses are, go to Terriffill. Again, adding to the character in the, of the, of the village. Housing and rental market, just looking into, um, some of the house values versus monthly rents, um, that are out there. Again, all this data is available in your packet. Affordable housing. So I'm gonna apologize now, because I am not really familiar. So I'm gonna apologize now because I am not really familiar with these slides.
There's not a lot of affordable housing in um in a kind of deed restricted or assisted, and you know, there may be. Maybe some that are more naturally occurring in in Terrifield, but you know, you take the naturally occurring with the lower average area median income. So you question whether whether there, you know, there really are that many naturally occurring there. Um but nonetheless, there's uh you know, there's there are some assisted. As part of, you know, state program stuff, but in in terms of deed restricted, I'm not, I'm not sure there's hardly any.
But the good news is you have a plan that was adopted in two thousand twenty-one with several strategies on how you're going to improve upon that. Employment and market conditions. Um so a lot of this is based on um available data. So total employment within Terrifield, hundred and thirty people. Um and those top employers, professional, scientific and technical services, um public administration. And then accommodation and food services or restaurants or bars. Forty percent of all employees in Terrifield travel to work from Simsberry, Granby and New Britain. And then I think you can sort of imagine that Bloomfield County and Coventry would sort of be that next, that next route out with Coventry. And Southfield sort of being the the outliers.
Mark, I think I asked this question of 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 Taylor, but I don't I don't know that that we got the answer, but. Does that 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 graphic, does that graphic suggest that only seven people. Who live in Terrifield, work in Terrifield? Of the, there's a hundred and thirty people employ.
Yep.
Jobs, let's let's talk about, hundred and thirty jobs in Terrifield, most of them at the lot at the mill, obviously, right? Um and so if you're doing employment inflow outflow, so a hundred and twenty-three of those come in to work, plus seven is a hundred and thirty. So that's in, that that that's the stat, that's an interesting stat.
It's a very interesting stat. We can I, we can verify that one, but if it is, it would make me think, how can we keep more people in town working?
Oh, that's interesting.
Does the school system uh compen- employ?
Yeah, it should.
Yeah, I would put that under pub- public administration, probably.
Yes. Should. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that says excluding public administration, so.
Oh, that says excluding.
I'd like to check that number, okay.
I think there would be um people like myself in Terrifield. That are self-employed or business owners that do work from home.
I don't know.
So is that not, do we not qualify as a house?
I don't understand. No, I'm not sure how that's captured, that's a good, it's a good point, I don't know how.
Yeah.
Let's check on that, I'm not sure we're capturing that.
Yeah, and again, the reason, the reason why we wanted to come sort of present this and. Is to find any glaring things that just aren't making sense, so.
Yeah, but that one came up and I was like.
Yeah.
Again, again, if it's just a straight inflow outflow. Uh um variable, then then maybe you're not getting.
But if, yeah, so I'm looking at.
Work from home folks, so let's, we'll figure that out.
Cause it says five point, five point four percent of employees in Terrifield also live within the village, if you look.
Five percent is.
Yeah, five percent.
Five percent is seven.
Might convert to about seven, yeah.
So I think.
So the numbers are actually working, five percent is seven, so.
Well, just, you know, I think the footnote might be important here, it says data is from twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
So the full effect of working from home may not have been captured yet.
Yeah. Yeah.
Jimmy, you might be right about that.
But rest assured, not a lot of people, you know.
Yeah.
That's the answer.
I think more people leave Terrifield and go to work.
Yeah.
That's the answer.
Then come in.
Right, right.
Okay, inventory of the businesses. Yeah, so this is basically Main Street and the Mill Building, uh the Mill Building, uh we tallied seventeen businesses. Commercial offices and medical offices, um and then Main Street, eight businesses, including two restaurants.
Winter Street has a few businesses. One, two, four.
I checked to see whether we captured the entire study area as opposed to just those two streets. That's most of them.
Yeah, and then um trade areas, Taylor tried to explain this to me and she would do a much better job explaining this, but. It's based, it's it's based off of a drive time, um so a fifteen-minute drive time. Outside of Terrifield, residents within the primary trade area, which is that fifteen-minute drive time, are likely to visit Terrif- Terrifield's businesses due to its proximity and convenience. The secondary is a thirty-minute drive, the residents within that area. Are potential consumers that would travel to Terrifield for a specific purpose or a destination, a restaurant.
I agree.
The hair salon, things of that nature, the river, river activities, the park. Um and then other consumers are rec- recreational enthusiasts, individuals who hike or bike along the trails, um that cross through Terrifi- Terrifield are also potential users.
Did that include uh commuters, you know, traveling, let's say, from Simsberry to Hartford or?
I don't think that, I I don't think that includes.
A lot of people that just passed through.
I I I think it in, I don't I don't think it's inclusive of a.
Commuter, it's intentional.
Of a. Of employment destination, right, it's 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 goods and services.
No, it's it's.
Right.
As a destination and unemployment.
Yeah, it's.
So if you're, it doesn't include going to Hartford for work, it would include.
No. But the uh as a potential customer, if you had a coffee shop and you're traveling through Terrifield, you might stop.
Yes.
At the coffee shop.
And if you lived within, if you if you lived within thirty minutes of Terrifield, you would be captured under this. If you lived outside of thirty minutes, you wouldn't be captured in that trade area. This is really looking at sort of that fifteen-minute drive time, want the disposable income to be spent, potentially is, and then the thirty, the thirty-minute drive.
And ultimately, you're gonna put, you're gonna put a part, you you can put a population to that, which this slide doesn't do.
It's not yet.
This is drive time, so there's X number of people in the primary trade area, there's X number of people in the secondary trade area, it's more of a market study kind of thing.
Yes. Market segmentation, and I'll just read this off, market segmentation. Um uses an array of demographic and socioeconomic variables to describe the characteristics of diverse community communities. And classifies them into different segments. This information can help us understand the type of businesses or amenities that the population would support. The following breakdown establishes the three largest market segments within Terrifield's primary and secondary trade areas. And what they are, that their names are interesting, savvy suburbanites. Um and those are defined as residents are educated, affluent and enjoy suburban living. Families include empty nesters and those with adult children at home, they engage in home remodeling, gardening, sports. Exercise and appreciate good food and wa- good food, wine and cultural events. Um park and rec. These suburbanites have achieved homeownership usually with older homes, including townhomes and multifamilies. Many are two-income married couples nearing retirement, comfortable in their jobs and homes and budget-wise. They take advantage of local parks and recre- recreational activities. And then the golden years category are independent, active seniors nearing the end of their careers or already retired. They actively pursue a variety of leisure interests such as travel, sports, dining, museums and concerts. Uh recreational spending. Um that first bullet doesn't really relate exactly to Terrifield, but recreational spending is, we talked about uh COVID. It it's through the roof, um that's a big number in the state, four point six billion. Um and what we found out is Terrifield spends more than the national average on recreation across the board. So again, going back to the trade areas, the recreational spending categories for primary and secondary, sports, recreation and exercise equipment, fees for lessons. Bicycles, uh bicycling, hunting and fishing equipment and camping fees. Residents in the primary trade area, so that's that fifteen-minute. Spend twenty percent more than the national average on water sports equipment and forty percent more on winter sports equipment.
And and again, the pur- the purpose of that, it it I think it's, I think it's, I hope it's obvious, is that we have an amazing resource there. And by the way, people are spending money on recreation, so how, you know, how how at the end of this process can we come up with ideas or recommendations? Capitalize on that, on that, on that amenity.
And so again, pretty obvious slide, um your current recreational assets, Terrifield Park. Farmington River and Salmon Brook, Terrifield Gorge, um and the hiking trails. I might also put the bikeway in here myself. It is rather new.
Yeah.
Um but I think we should probably add that on there. And then tying it into, you know, those surveys said, hey, look at these other communities. Um and lo and behold, they have a lot of similar things, but also some things that um we should look at that are working there. Could they work in Terrifield, so Collinsville, we know we have the Greenway, um we know we have uh Collinsville canoe and kayak. Um and they do have a walkable, maybe a little flatter in some areas than Terrifield, but there's some similarities there. Um some good and some don't work in Collinsville either, so nothing is perfect on any of these examples. Um Old Weathersfield. Um they have a pretty neat arts and culture, um they have some, they have some pretty neat things that they plan. And that really isn't, I mean, you can do some infrastructure improvements on the ground. But a lot of that is programming of these things to make them work. Uh and then Unionville probably has the, has a larger population. Um but again, they're consistently trying to do some different things as well, so. You should definitely pay attention to similar communities, um but the intent is never to say, we want to be just like, no. You look at it, you see if some of the things that are working there um can be modified, um or tailored um to something that fits better within your community. Areas of national significance, um national historic district. The East Coast Greenway. Farmington River Wild and Scenic, the Lower Farmington River Wild and Scenic. And the New England National Scenic Trail. Again, when you think about the small size of the village and the fact that you have four areas of national significance. That's something that, yes, there, it is being taken, the opportunity is there now and it's being taken advantage of, but. It could probably be taken more advantage of to support more things. To bring a little bit more life that we heard could potentially be with some improvements, some more businesses. So everything starts to come together and we really try not. To draw too many conclusions, cause we're still in the data gathering stage and the. The public involvement sessions are very important to get the everyday analysis that. You know, I can say I have a little bit of a heads up on Robert and Taylor because I'm here all the time, but again, I don't live in Terrifield, so. We're looking forward to getting that, however, drawing drawing some conclusions and takeaways. Um easy ones, population thirteen hundred, median age forty-one. Occupied housing units, six hundred and forty-one, and then the footnote on that one. Almost half, fifty percent of those six hundred and forty-one um would qualify under low-income housing standards.
Of affordable housing.
Of the affordable housing, yes.
Really, it's not really the low income, it's the eighty percent.
Correct.
To to eighty.
What was the number, I'm sorry?
Forty-eight percent.
Forty-eight percent.
Three hundred and twenty out of six forty-one.
Yeah.
Will qualify for eighty percent?
Well, it's it it.
Most likely.
I think that they are, they would fall below the eighty percent.
Correct.
Area median, it would, it would be between eighty percent and.
Yeah.
I don't know what the bottom numbers is.
Forty percent, I think, is the.
Yeah, I don't know what the bottom number is.
There were three.
Yeah.
Designations.
Yes, yeah.
I've shut them off, I'm sorry.
The rent, the median of the rents, uh twelve hundred, around twelve hundred. And the housing units built post nineteen ninety, ten, we talked about that slide, that's impressive. Think about that one, ten homes built after nineteen ninety. Which goes back to.
I have built out.
Which goes back to that category of savvy or one of the topics was, which makes them, are home remodelers. Because that's really what the target would be, there's not space to really build new homes, but there's a lot of remodeling. And then the economic and market um conclusion, so the median income about eighty-three six, eighty-three thousand six hundred. Total businesses, twenty-five. The top industry we talked about, professional, scientific and technical services make up twenty-six percent. Bachelor's degree, um third, bachelors, bachelor's degree or higher, just shy of forty percent. Residents in the primary trade area, um we just talked about, they spend twenty percent more than the national average does on water sports. Lightbulb moment. Um and forty percent of the national average of winter sports, which I thought was kind of interesting. I'm just. National average on winter sports, so if you start to, I I was trying to figure out where that draw was.
Where's that database, I'd like to know, what's that database?
Because if it does include the entire US, which it does, you're not gonna have a huge winter sport.
Right.
In Florida.
Lower, yeah, and the western, so.
Yeah, that is, it's interesting.
It is, it is. Um and then the recreational assets that we talked about, um that you have, that I think we're gonna add. In the bikeway to that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, this was just a summary of a lot of information that's in there, we will make this presentation, which is a good summary presentation, at least available to. Um to you all.
Yeah, it's.
So now, I'm just gonna pull up.
Uh just one more thing on the hiking and recreation activities, just kind of two groups, there's the mountain bikers and then there's the. Uh road bikers, and they're actually a little bit distinct and quite uh quite prolific, both sides. Mountain bikers and road bikers.
Yeah, I would hope we get some representation um on Thursday from the groups, I would hope. So see if not.
Of course, a few people will call for for that, on the.
Yeah, please do.
On which side, the ma- on both sides?
Both sides, yeah, both sides. And you know, now that we know that, I think we did know that, if we don't get that feedback in the public forum side of things. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't include it, we need to do our best to use who we have to sort of investigate and get some more information.
It's a big draw, I gotta say, the bicycle people come from all over the.
Yeah, they do.
Oh, everywhere, come from everywhere, out of state everywhere. And uh same with the uh the through bikers, the road bikers and the recreational road bikers too. I mean, I'm on the, I'm on the trails at least twice a week.
Which trails?
The new bikeway. The new bikeway.
The sense I get is uh. That that the product of going through uh of the new bike path in in the gorge on running one eighty-nine.
Yeah.
Is. I don't see a lot of road bikers on that.
That you never will, cause.
And now, they're relegated to the newly narrowed Route one eighty-nine.
Yeah.
You know, and if someone said, well, we should put a bike lane on that road, there's barely barely enough road for passing traffic.
Route one eighty-nine?
Yeah.
Yeah. You're actually, you're actually right, that that makes a third group. The uh the folks who ride on the road, the folks who ride on the paved trails.
Yeah.
And the folks who mountain bike, there's actually three groups. But that that stretch in Terrifield next to one eighty-nine is an alternative, cause you would be taking your life on the hands of the road.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a nice alternative.
It's the one slide I did.
There's everything else, there's a quote. Bring a lot of people over from the. A lot of people come over as. Over in the background.
Yeah.
Bring the.
That's why I'm here.
Bring the. Okay, so that's a summary of the survey, um. And then the other very detailed piece of the existing conditions portion. Um then, to talk a little bit about the open house number one that's coming up Thursday, it's at Terrifield Elementary School. Um word of mouth is always a good way to get it out, um so if you haven't made that call to your neighbor, um or friend or business owner. Make sure you do and. um or friend or business owner, make sure you do and it's a it's a pop in, so they there's no set time. Come after work, come before dinner, come after dinner, if you eat early. Um so the focus, there's really four focus areas and they're gonna be set up within stations um around the room. And there'll be a professional or two from SLR at the station, whomever from the committee. Um or you all wanna come, find one that you sort of have an interest in, camp out there, but you don't have to stay there. Um add into some con- some con- conversation, um if you hear it. But station one is gonna be really about more specifics about the project, what we're doing, what's the goal of it, um where we are in the process, what when we're gonna be finished in the process, where where they can um give some more input if they have some more ideas or they wanna get involved in the project. First station's really about the project. Um station two and three are really more about the village itself, so the second one is connectivity um in the village. So it's really, how do you spend your day in the village, what do you do in the village, how do you interact with it? You know, if we get somebody that lives in Simsbury that can't stand the traffic driving through the village, okay, that's great, we wanna it's not all good stuff we wanna hear, we wanna hear what are the issues and what are some of your ideas? It's the everyday analysis that we're looking at. Um station three, community spaces, so that's really looking at those big green areas that we talked about on the map, um that may be a little bit underutilized. Um that's my opinion, that's our opinion, I will be curious to see. Oh, I wish we could have more signage to let people know where that park is or no, we like it hidden back there, we don't want any more people in the village. Those are the types of things that I wouldn't be surprised if we got some of that. And then station four, we always like to do a a activity that's a little different, that makes people think a little bit, so they're not just coming and giving their opinions. And this one has worked um a lot of times in a little different area and a little um different take on it, this one is a postcard from the future, so if you were if you were in Terriffill in two thousand thirty four, um what would that postcard be discussing or talking about what Terriffill was like in two thousand thirty four?
People love that exercise, I've done that exercise, people like to have that.
Um so that one, you know, may take a little bit, what I would what's sometimes we do some samples, I hesitate to even do samples, I like to talk people through it and
Ah, don't, don't, don't.
what do I have to do? No, you can give them some examples, you know?
Sure, did you have a question about that last slide?
Well, yeah, when you did community spaces, um I thought it should include the village green.
I don't think we meant to make that um
Yeah.
Yeah, add that, add 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 village green.
I can add it, I have the extra.
But we was not meant to to exclude that, it was
Yeah, yeah.
community spaces like
Mm-hmm.
these spaces, yeah, add that.
And that would be a wonderful comment, like if we left this up, if the booth was only set up Terriffill Park and the Farmington River, I would love somebody to come and say, well, you forgot about the community green, it's the most important part of the whole but we will add that one, but that's a that's a good
Yeah, add it, add it. It's a catch.
good comment. So yeah, this will be a station just dedicated to this one, people wanna write them down. We'll have somebody just there to scribe for them if they don't wanna write it down, and if somebody doesn't wanna write it down and just we hear something that's verbal, we'll write it down. Um and it'll be anonymous and it's it's a good activity, it'll be very interesting um to see what people say and then what what can we do implementation wise and planning wise to make sure we can set that as a possibility, or even more important, explain why that really can't be a possibility, cause that's that's okay too, if you can describe what are some of the obstacles and hurdles um to make that happen, like I think there needs to be a stoplight, you know, mid hill on the state road, we can explain why that most likely will never happen. That's okay, let's look at different options, maybe we can so there's there's all kinds of things, but that'll be the an activity there too, so um we're looking forward to the open house on Thursday. Um I wish I had Taylor with me because she could probably answer, and she would have done a much better job on that second part of the presentation, I apologize. Um she will be there on Thursday though. If I have to drive her there, she'll be there. So it'll be myself, it'll be Robert, it'll be Taylor, um and it'll be
And and me and Brittany and Joe.
And Sheba, we're gonna bring Sheba too, she's a another landscape architect, she spends splits her time in New Haven and in our Cheshire office. She's great.
So the stu- so stuff in your Dropbox is is for your review and and comment and feedback? Um what did we miss, should we have looked at this, how about you look at that? You know, before we kinda kind of make some of those reports final.
Yeah, so Robert did tell me, um he was hoping that it would be a week from when you got the information, and I said, a week? He said, ask if you could get it by the end of next week if you have any comments on all that information.
Typical project manager.
If you have comments, give me give me your comments as soon as you can, and we'll we'll deal with it.
He did, he did, he's he did, he said, tell them Tuesday, I said, all right, can we get them till the end of the week?
We'll deal with it. So yeah, so there's a lot going on, we have hardly even absorbed a lot of this data, you know, and gotten a lot of information.
Yeah. Yeah, there is a lot of information.
Um as well as other questions.
George and Mark. Yeah, I've got a quick question, just a minor point here, under employment, we have the Old Well Tavern listed. Should that be included in the village of Ter- Terriffill?
No.
As a business?
It's not, it's not in there. The catch, not in there.
That's it?
No, no.
It shouldn't, okay.
It's not, it's not the study area.
Yeah, it's listed here.
Hmm.
Under employment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fun place, but it's not terrible, I think.
Yeah, and you have another bit, you know, if that's listed, then there's another brand new business going right behind it.
Yeah, we don't wanna do that, yeah.
It's not, it's not really. Yeah, that's good catch, that's the kind of thing, great, I'm
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so we're excited, just like we, you know, we we are are um you know Sherry and 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 her team and 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 John, they certainly get the word out, right? Um and we we sent the flyer to every property owner. Uh we didn't had them sent it by mail, we didn't ha- you know, we didn't deliver them to each house, but we did send it to every address in Terriffill, uh the uh flyer, and this is after the survey, so we sent it last week, said, you know, come to the come to the vote meeting and the you know, the the village association has been really helpful getting the word out, I expect we should have some folks there. You know, so I think it'll be good, I think it'll be a really good event. That's all we got.
Thank you.
And you guys will come back and present the data from Thursday in a few months?
Um I don't know if it'll be that long, I know they probably got it all scheduled out, but yes, the answer is yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there'll be a reporting mechanism.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how we're gonna do it.
Okay.
When that will occur.
Well, thank you for putting up with a very lackluster performance and I apologize, you had to deal with me.
You did a fine job.
Yeah, it weren't really that bad, that's not what she said, I'll take that. So that's all we got.
Yeah. All right, any other questions? All right.
Just uh something I heard earlier, uh George mentioned that uh vessel development building permits have been applied for, applied for George or granted?
Applied for.
Applied for.
Under the permits are under review.
Yeah. So remember last meeting, with the comment was made that there had not been any movement on that project.
Correct.
So now there is movement.
So you're getting a vessel project?
We are.
There's one right in front of our office in Cheshire, that's just about done.
We are.
Can I go up quick?
Um start to finish under two months.
Big square in white.
Uh right now, they haven't put the outside on, we're all taking bets on what the outside finish is gonna be.
Wobble room, sorry, Mark.
So it's it, I was amazed, cause every day going into the office, it's right on Route ten in Cheshire.
It is, huh?
Right on Route ten, you can't miss it, across the street from Highland Bowl, a little bowling alley. Very interesting how it went up, very efficient.
Yeah.
Um everything is pre-manufactured, every side, every top.
Does it come in like, you know, uh
No, it comes in
Fourth.
every wall comes in on a flat bed and they stand them up.
A wall does, it's all wired, you think?
Um yeah, it's gotta be all wired.
Yeah, it's all just rector set.
Yeah, it's um Went up pretty quick, I wanna say two months, it's up, now they're putting the finishing, the walls on, but
Yeah.
Yeah. So do it.
They're 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 making an impression in Connecticut.
Six, seven, eight projects.
Yeah. Avon welcomed it with open arms.
All right, on that note, without objection, I'll adjourn the meeting at eight oh two.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
We appreciate that. Ah, thank you.